Redford Township Board of Trustees to order, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing while the Honorable Garth Christie gives the invocation.
Almighty God, we acknowledge that you will hold us to account for the way we legislate and administer the affairs of our township and its fine people. We pray for your guidance as we do so. We pray that you would find us protecting the rights of all at all times, that our community and this nation will fulfill all of your purposes. Amen.
Amen. Garth Christie, please take the roll.
Ms. Kavanaugh is absent. Mr. Christie here. Ms. Jackson is absent. Ms. Kennedy.
Here.
Mr. King.
Here.
Ms. Taylor.
Here.
Mr. McCray.
Here.
The form is present. We have no citizen comments this evening. Oh, we need to have approval of the agenda as presented.
To the Chair?
Trustee Taylor.
I move that we approve the agenda.
Support.
Supported by Trustee King. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next we have Mr. Bonnerick. This, Director Bonnerick, please introduce our guest.
Sure. Good evening, Honorable Board. This evening we have with us Jeremy Chambers from CapTrust. CapTrust serves as our fiscal advisors for our 457B cafeteria plan for our employees, which is administered through Mission Square. He is going to give his annual brief update for all of you about the state of the plan. And while he's coming up and getting started, I'm going to pass out a folder of information from him.
Thank you, Adam, and good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So while Adam's passing that out, I did include two different items in that folder. On the left-hand side is a two-page, just kind of executive summary of what's happened over the past year or so. Last year I was here in the early fall, and since then we've had five meetings with the committee to discuss the 457 plan. On the right-hand side is an overview, some pages from our most recent investment report as of September 30th. So I'm not going to go through and read all of this information. I know Adam asked me to keep this pretty brief, but did want to provide a quick update on the 457 plan and what's been happening. And pretty much all of that is summarized on the left-hand side, the two-pager that I provided. So we have met, like I said, five times with Adam and Lily. Diane did not attend any of the meetings this past year, but she has in the past. We met five times since last August. You can see here the information on CapTrust as well as Mission Square. So as Adam mentioned, Mission Square is the record keeper. CapTrust, we are the advisor on the plan. And I think I shared this last year, but just as a quick reminder who CapTrust is. So myself, again Jeremy Chambers, I was with Plant Moran for a number of years, for over 25 years, working at Plant Moran, part of their financial advisors team. Back in August of 2020, our practice was acquired by CapTrust. So that's where the CapTrust name comes from. So previously, Plant Moran serving this plan, now at CapTrust. So CapTrust is a very large national organization managing nearly a billion, or excuse me, a trillion dollars in assets. So a very large organization. What that means to all of you is that size allows us to access low-cost investment options, much lower cost than we can typically access. So it's one of the benefits that we bring to the table. As of October 31st, there were approximately 13 and a half million dollars in assets in the plan, 202 individuals with account balances. As of November, I just got some updated numbers earlier today, actually. I think there's 203 now, so one more person with a balance actively contributing. There's 122, and there are still 74 terminated employees with a balance in the plan. So they are allowed to keep their assets in the plan should they desire until, after they terminate, until which time they want to access that money. Not going to go through and read all the plan highlights that are outlined here, but a couple of key items that I wanted to mention. Back in November of 2022, we did make one investment change within the plan. So Oakmark International was replaced by Dodge and Cox International Stock. That change was effective, actually, in March of '24. So the decision was made in November of '22 to make that change. Also, there's been some changes ongoing at Mission Square. It's something that we are keeping an eye on and in constant contact with them to understand more of what's happening there. I know Adam's had a lot of contact with them as well. But you can see here towards the bottom, back in April of '23, they did undergo some leadership changes with Lynn Ford, the CEO and president since November of 2019 departed Mission Square. So a number of changes going on there. Again, we're keeping an eye on things. The other piece on that second page, and this ties into the information on the right-hand side. So as part of our process or our role in overseeing the plan is the ongoing monitoring of the investment options. It's something that we do on a daily basis. We have almost 100 individuals that are responsible for the investment research. They go out and meet with these managers of these investment companies. There are three funds as of September 30th that are quote-unquote "on the watch list", and those three are identified in that second page. Basically, when you see this total score, anything between 70 and 79 is considered on the watch list or marked for review, and these three investment options are as such. Not recommending any changes with any of these at this time, and we do identify here that all three are recommended to maintain in the plan. And give you a little bit of background as to why that is. So we certainly understand why all three are on that watch list, and we are keeping a close eye on them, but all are, no recommendations to make a change at this point. So I'll pause there, and if there's any questions, happy to answer any questions anybody may have.
Questions from the board?
No? Okay.
Anybody?
No.
All righty. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. You've been very informational. Director Jablonski?
Mr. Supervisor, members of the board, good evening. The Economic Development Department's mission statement is the primary focus of to support commercial, industrial, and new multifamily residential projects in the township. This includes new developments and expansion projects alongside efforts for attraction and retention of business. The Economic Development Department assists new businesses to navigate the township's development process and identify potential resources that are available to increase project feasibility and act as a township's liaison to the DDA and Redford Township Chamber of Commerce. And we serve as a liaison between the business community and Redford Township by providing guidance and support to existing businesses communicating township goals for the future. Redford Township has 2.9 million square feet of commercial manufacturing office warehouse space with a 95% occupancy rate. The DDA district has 157,000 square feet of commercial space, residential, and manufacturing with a 98% occupancy space. Redford Township Site Committee approvals in 2023, 96 new commercial businesses were approved, of which 23 were light, medium industrial space, subject to final inspection, of course, and issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Redford retail overview as of 2023, we've got 35 used car dealers, 83 auto repair shops, 24 gas stations, 28 liquor stores, 37 hair and nail salons, 25 daycare facilities, and 517 miscellaneous retail establishments, 95 restaurants and local and food-related businesses, and 33 medical businesses. On the industrial side, we have Daimler Truck, Detroit Diesel, Redford Facility. In 2023, celebrated 85 years of heavy-duty power system machining and manufacturing and built 1.1 million heavy-duty engines at the Redford plant. Daimler Truck is also in the final stages to build an electric vehicle truck charging facility in Redford at their facility. Township-owned property sale transactions, 2003, 23, 2003, I'm ahead of myself. The former Cambridge property at 18633 Beach Daly sold for $215,000, and the property that we owned on West Seven Mile at 25945, Seven Mile, sold for $185,000, $2,000, and for a total of $400,000 to the township. In the township, what we've done is we continue to work with local and national commercial, industrial brokers, developers to attract new business to Redford Township. We act, we interact with other Michigan economic departments, chambers of commerce to share information on local issues, identify businesses entering or relocating in the marketplace. We participated in the steering and planning committees for the Township Recreation and Wellness Center, and we participated in the Michigan Brownfields Conference, participated in International Council Shopping Centers Conference on Retail Development, participated with the GMAR Government Affairs Board, served on the Michigan Commercial Board of Realtors, and participated on the Wade Trim Master Plan Steering Committee. We are also arranged and participated in meetings with MEDC and Wayne County Economic Division on Township Development. Now, as far as the DDA is concerned, the Economic Development is currently marketing for sale the township-owned property known as the Dennis, vacant Dennis Building at 26029 Five Mile Road. The Dollar General Market on Beach Daly opened in the spring of 2023. It is a Dollar General prototype selling both retail food, retail and food products with a projected sale of $3 million a year. Community involvement has been very important for the Dollar General, and we've had no adverse feedbacks. It's doing very well. The DDA Board of Eight Members met six times during 2023. Five of the eight members were new appointees, and a majority of the DDA Board members operate businesses or have a financial interest within the DDA. The Redford Site Committee approved 17 new businesses in the DDA, five nail and hair salons, two clothing shops, one gym, one event design studio, two catering shops, one driving school, two daycare facilities, one filter testing company, one cabinet company, and a personal storage company, and of course, the VFW also was approved. The Redford property, known as formerly as the Wick Building, at the southeast corner of Aubrey and Five Mile, has been demolished and is available for development in 2024, 2025. We're going to continue to work with Mike Dennis and Wade Trim to implement a plan to improve Elsinore Road entranceway to the township complex. We received a $5,000 Veterans Park Improvement Grant from the Greater Metropolitan Association of Realtors. The goals for 2024. Plan to personally visit existing commercial and industrial businesses to maintain and build a positive and supportive relationship with the net community. Manage the DDA tenant mix strategy, and continue to work with existing business owners on blight elimination, beautification, new investment, and expansion opportunities. I plan to form a business recruitment team. This would be an action-oriented, problem-solving team comprised of local real estate professionals and current business owners, developing a work plan to establish goals and a regular review of the community's diversity of businesses. We continue to participate in the planning committee for the Township Recreation and Wellness Center project, continue to work with SEMCOG and MEDC, efforts for a coordinated approach to community fleet electrification and strategic placement of EV charging stations within the township. Plan to complete the MEDC requirements to market Redford Township as a redevelopment-ready community, work with the MEDC and SEMCOG on the Main Street approach to commercial district revitalization, focus on the implementation of the Redford Township 2040 Comprehensive Master Plan, work with Wayne County to focus on the Wade Trim Five Mile Plan to slow the speed, reduce drive lanes, and install bike lanes on Five Mile Road. This is an ongoing process. It's going to be a, it's not a sprint, it's going to be a marathon, planning out for five years. Long-term target for commercial development is township-owned property at Telegraph and Plymouth Road, and working with real estate developers at MDOT is essential for future development. That too will be a long-term process. Participate and assist Mike Dennis on a refurbishment of the Marquee. Participate, work with Mike Dennis on a proposed Five Mile Road streetscape plan east from Aubrey Street to Telegraph Road, propose removal and replacement of corridor trees and installation of new ornamental lights throughout the entire DDA corridor. Plan to support the township supervisor, Board of Trustees, department directors, and staff to achieve our strategic imperatives. I'd also like to say thank you very much and for the support and cooperation of Mike Dennis, Michelle Mancini, Jen McNeff, and Lee Dodd for the continued support and assistance. Thank you.
Okay. Director Jablonski, I just have a couple of quick questions about Site Committee approvals for 2023.
Yes.
That'd be on page one. My question would be on that, is that we had 96 new commercial businesses were approved. Do we know how many, and that means that they were approved and got CVO for the building?
No, they were approved to move forward for inspections and compliance to get a certificate of occupancy.
Okay, well.
That's in the process.
Okay. I guess what I'd like to know is how many of our businesses that got approved and went through Site Committee actually finished the process, that got the CVO. So if you can get that, you know, to share with the board, if you get that, you can just email us out so we know. Out of those 96, how many, you know, how many are we actually getting? Because it's been kind of a thing that a lot of people apply, they go to Site Committee and then they disappear, so. The other thing, I think, was on page three, same thing, 17 new businesses in the DDA. Are these actual businesses that actually have CVO, or are these like the other ones that are kind of pending, or, I mean, I don't know?
They're in the process.
They're in the process.
Yeah.
The same thing there, if you can get us, how many actually are there? So, you know, so we know how many actual businesses that we're getting, that would be great. Other than that, I really like your goals and objectives. I, you know, I'm going through and reading them and I'm checking them off, and I think they're a very good list, and I'll be interested to see how we're going to accomplish those, but I think it's a good list to work off of. Other members of the board, Trustee King?
I just got a question on page one also. Just for clarification, Redford Township, the commercial manufacturing office and warehouse space is listed at 95% occupancy rate. That's the, that's the entire township?
That's correct, and that's on your handout also, sir.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to confirm, that's, that's good, that we're at a 95% occupancy rate. I think that's good.
Yeah, that report is compiled, the research is compiled and presented by CoStar, which is a nationally recognized company for research for real estate, and that's on the sheet here.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Other questions from the board?
Mr. Chair?
Just, I'm sorry, Garth Christie.
Yes, the property there at 25945 Seven Mile, was that the old Rycott Building? Yes. On Norbourn. Can you tell me who bought it? Kurt? Or the business that they're in? Yes. It's primarily a staging area for internet supplies and so forth. They'll order from the internet and then supply where, that's a warehouse-type operation. Two or three employees, husband and wife. And can, can you shed any light on what's going on in Five Mile there, across the street from us? Can you tell us anything about that? Across the street from us, let's see. Yeah, just over here.
Walker.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right now, he's completing remodel for a tenant, but she has, he had a tenant, was a nail hair salon. And the other is a spec property. He's building out for spec. Speculation for a new tenant, and somebody might come along and say, okay, this is the type of business I want, or the building I want, and this is where I want to locate. But he doesn't have a prospect in place right now. The other property, that was adjacent to the Chamber of Commerce. The other property moving to the, to the east was the insurance company and a lawyer's office, and it was listed for $250,000 about six months ago. Then they dropped it down to $230,000, then they dropped it to $190,000, and there's currently an offer on the property by Lorenzo Walker on the property, and he hopes to close within the next couple of weeks. That's what he told me a week ago. And I just have a couple of comments. I'm glad to see that that office building go down at Five and Aubrey. I used to visit a doctor in that, that building, and Dick Mastaw was in that building, and the landlord was just not keeping it up. It was dilapidated even when it, when it was being used. So I'm glad to see that, that come down in common. You know, I, I agree with your, your effort to work with Wayne County to slow down the speed here at Five Mile, but, you know, that's something that we've been trying to do. You know, it's discussed when Mr. Handy was a supervisor, so that's how long we've, we've been dealing with that. But other than, other than that, I'm very happy with your, your report. The, I'd like to make a comment relative to the Aubrey property known as the Wick Building. Congratulate Michelle Mancini and Mike Dennis in handling that and getting it handled and torn down and with the proper channels, and I believe we also had some funds that were brownfield funds?
Not that it was.
Okay. But anyway, Michelle did a great job on it. Yeah, I'm glad, I'm glad to see that come down. The, the property owner just was not taking care of it. What was the other question? You had another. You had another, what's going to, anyway.
Oh, the slowing down of the traffic.
Yeah. I talked to David Schreiber, Wayne County Commission, and he, he said, Tony, there's been a number of requests for that, number one. Number two, he checked with the Wayne County Commission and said, we've got a five-year plan, I don't know where we can fit you in. But yes, it's something that we've got to work on. This, this is not a sprint. It's a marathon, like I said.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, and also the Wick property, what we'll be doing on that is to get an appraisal of the property, define the asking price, bring it up against the board and have their approval and so forth, so we can market the property for development.
Okay. I, I guess I have one follow-up question because I, I think this came up with the DDA and I don't remember what the answer was. So on page one, the very first thing that says 95% occupancy, occupancy rate, does that mean that the building is owned or is actually somebody in there? I mean, if I own a business, the building is empty, then to me it's occupied, but I don't know how it comes out on the CoStar reading.
Right, it's a 90% occupancy means it's occupied by someone doing business in the building.
Okay, so that means there are businesses in there and not just vacant buildings?
And it also can, depending upon the CoStar research.
Okay.
That's what we found, yes.
Okay, so to be clear, that we're not sure, we're just going by them, but we don't, we haven't verified that those numbers.
I haven't made a personal visit.
Okay, no, no, I want to make sure that, because I think it's great that 95% of the buildings are owned, but if there's no business in there, we have people that own a building and it's empty. So that's my concern.
Owned or leased, yes.
Oh, okay, all right. Other than that, any other questions from the board?
No.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your report.
Thank you.
Next is the Consent Agenda Items.
Mr. Chair?
Clark Christie.
I move approval to consent agenda items as follows. One, minutes of regular meeting November 28, 2023. Two, minutes of special meeting December 5, 2023. And three, warrant list of bills as of December 7 and the total amount of $2,927,305 and 14 cents.
Support.
Supported by Trustee Kennedy. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Clark Christie.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the board has been provided with proposed meeting dates for 2024. I would, at this time, I would offer one change on the proposal in April rather than the 20th, meeting on the 23rd, to meet on the 30th in order to accommodate the MTA Annual Conference. Board members can, can make that change on, on their calendar. Other than that, that this, these proposed, proposed dates are intended to discourage trustees from taking Jazzercise on Tuesdays and, which has been our custom, but it allows for board members to take Jazzercise on any other day of the week. So with that, I would, I would move for approval of the proposed 2024 board regular meeting dates with that, that one change from April 23rd to the 30th.
Support.
Supported by Trustee Kennedy. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Next, we have, I will guess three, your director, Stokes. I apologize for any time I get casual because all the directors are, you know, they're very friendly and they're like family to all of us, so I apologize. I meant no offense.
Oh, you are fine, thank you. Good evening. As before in the special or the study session earlier, Tracy went over the packet for the design development. So this is a formality coming before you to get the formal approval that if you are good with the direction that we are currently going and that we have been describing to you, that we would be asking for the approval to approve the design development and proceed to the construction document phase.
Questions from the board? Hearing none, what is the pleasure of the board?
To the chair.
Trustee Taylor.
I move that we approve the Recreation and Wellness Center Design and Development Documents and approval to proceed with the construction document phase.
Support.
Supported by Trustee Kennedy. So the motion is to approve the Recreation and Wellness Center Design Development Documents and approval to proceed to the construction document phase. Any questions? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson is absent, Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you very much for what you're doing. Keep, continue to good work.
Director Stokes.
Thanks, okay. Do you want me to go on to the next item?
Yes, please.
Okay. So before you also, at the last meeting, we talked about the goals and some of the current buildings that are here. One of those buildings was, we talked about was the Ice Arena. As we talked before, we are really in the midst of getting the Recreation and Wellness Center up and running. I know this is the discussion that we've had a couple other times, but we would really like to be able to get further along with this project and then be able to have a study session with the board to really talk about what will we like to do with the Ice Arena in the future. Currently, like, as you're aware, Family Entertainment Properties leases that arena and they manage that and do all the programming within the building. They do pay us a monthly rate. It is the $22.50 a month. At this time, we are asking that you extend the lease for a current year. We did go ahead and put back in there, if you remember correctly, probably about three years ago, we did a one-year lease with the option for automatic renewal. That is if the board does not tell them that we would not like to renew it by December 31st of the previous year. So we did add that back in there. The attorneys have looked over all this document. They have corrected everything in here for you, so it is approved by them. So at this time, we're just asking for the approval to extend the contract from June 1st of 2024 through May 31st of 2025 with the option for an additional year.
Questions from the board? Hearing none, what's the pleasure of the board?
To the chair.
Trustee Taylor.
I move that we approve the renewal of the Redford Ice Arena contract, one-year extension from June 1st, 2024 to meet 31st, 2025.
Support.
Supported by Trustee King. So the motion is to approve the Redford Ice Arena contract, one-year extension, June 1st, 2024 through May 31st, 2025.
Can we just do a friendly moment? I just want to make sure that we have in there with the additional one-year extension option.
Any objections from the motion maker?
Motion amended to include the option to renew for an additional year.
Support still there?
Support.
So we're, the motion is to, to renew the Redford Ice Arena contract for one-year extension from June 1st, 2024 through May 31st, 2025 with the option for an extension of one year.
Correct.
Any other questions? Roll call vote.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. And Mr. McCray?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Any Director Stokes? Director Dennis?
Mr. Supervisor Honorable Board, excuse me. In front of you is a memo requesting approval for a three-year contract at Ferguson Waterworks for the Neptune 360 software package we use. Back in 2020, the board approved a three-year contract to Ferguson. We were transferring over from an existing system that the water department was using at the time, from Watersmart to Neptune. The Neptune 360 contract, Neptune 360 software allows us to read our meters, which are wireless, and it provides other software perks for us in regards to what our staff can do, but your treasurer Kavanaugh's staff can do at the water department. Helps with the billing and some online functions, but it's, it's a very valuable tool to what we use in regards to our water meters, our AMIs, you know, things of that nature. So the contract is expiring at the end of the action in January. We did ask Neptune for a new contract for three years, which would run starting February 1st of 2024 through January 30th of 2027. And it would be, they actually kept it, the amount, and were going to keep it the same each year. Years one, two, and three would be $44,056.18. They did not have a increase per year. That is currently what we're paying right now. It's a 13% increase from this fiscal year to next, or let's say, you know, calendar year here to an extent. And it would be the same amount each year. It'd just be $44,056.18 years one, two, and three. So I guess if you look between the three, that would be about a 4.3% increase each year if you look at it that way. And I was looking for approval to, for, to approve the contract to Neptune for the, again, for the total amount of $132,168.54, which again would be a three-year contract from 2024 to 2026.
2027.
Through, I'm sorry. Well, it's, yeah, January of, February 1st of '24 through January 30th of '27. So just basically through 20, yes.
Make sure what we're asking for.
Yes.
Questions from the board?
To the chair.
Trustee Taylor.
Mike, is this budgeted?
Yes.
Already?
Yes, it is.
Coming out of water, do we need to know what fund is coming out of?
It comes out of the Water Admin. I don't.
Water Admin Fund?
Yeah, it comes out of Water Admin. And since we had the GL numbers changed and Director Bonner, because I'm here, I couldn't tell the numbers off the head because we just changed GL numbers to the state accounting code and every number we have basically changed about 30 days ago. So learning new figures.
And this Waterworks Neptune, is this the type of service that is, like, there's one person out there that you can use for this kind of thing? Or are there multiple software companies offering this type of service?
There's not that many, but this is the, the system we're using with our, our, you know, our AMIs, our, our meter interface units. This is the company that we use to read those. So it's kind of, we're, we're kind of married to that.
Got it. So if we were to look to change the company, all of those would have to be changed and that would be a night grant?
It would not re.
That would not happen. Okay, that's what I needed to know. This was like a marriage.
Yes.
Kind of thing. Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Other questions from the board? Hearing none, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair?
Trustee King.
I move approval of the Ferguson Waterworks Neptune 360 software proposal agreement, a three-year contract, total amount of $132,168.54, effective February 1st, 2024 through January 31st, 2027, from the Water Administration Fund.
Support.
Supported by Trustee Taylor. So the motion is to approve Ferguson Waterworks Neptune 360 software proposal agreement, three-year contract, total amount of $132,168.54, effective February 1st, 2024 through January 31st, 2027, and the, the funding has come out of the Water Administration Fund. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Motion carries. Director Dennis?
Mr. Supervisor Honorable Board, in front of you is a, a proposal that has been amended for the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. Back in 2022, just a few years ago, this board allowed us to apply for a, for funding through the state's program, their state's revolving fund through Drinking Water, they call it DWSRF, where if you look at the CSO, that's the CW for Clean Water, SRF. So when we applied in 2022 with a project plan, we had a public hearing, a project plan, we submitted to the state and our project was turned down at that time. It was for a water bean project that we were concentrating in the southeast corner of the township. We have roughly 20, excuse me, 20, almost 28,000 lineal feet of existing six-inch water main. We were looking basically from Joy Road to Wadsworth, from Hazleton to Telegraph and a few, and we were going to do some loops near the Public Service Building and a small piece on Telegraph Road north of Five Mile. We rated probably, I think we got 70 points out of 100. They have a criteria system and we were about 110th out of hundreds that, that they, they accepted that year. So turn the page to October of '23. We've now been considered a, a overburdened community in regards to state criterias, overburdened community status under some Eagle, New Eagle standards. And when we were notified of our action level exceedance due to lead, that gives you bonus points. On a negative, it gives us bonus points in regards to your applications. So what that does is it actually gives us 10 to 15 points more in regards to our submission. So that would put us now into the funding range for the state. So we decided quickly, because the, the, we had to do something called the intent to apply, which was due in November, is we altered, we had to, excuse me, revise our application, our project plan. And what we did, the, the grant amount back in, excuse me, real quick, that we turned in was for $8.3 million, which is what we, we estimated. It was just for the water bean project. And so what we, what we have to do, what we did is we revised it, we updated it. So we added a 10% addition to the 2025 project because this went up funded. It's, you know, '23, we'll find out '24, it'll be a '25, '26 project. It'll be over two construction seasons. And so we added, you know, 10%, so and then we added $1 million for lead service line replacement. We thought that would still keep us within our, our limits of our bond payments. So we went from $8.3 million, we added on 10%, $830,000, added $1 million for lead service lines, which then increased our grant amount, or grant, excuse me, our application amount to $10,130,000. That has been turned into the state. We did already have a, a meeting with the state regarding this application about a week and a half ago, and it was very positive. We'll find out sometime in the next few months, but to keep, no, we have to, we've kind of gone backwards. Long story short, we need to redo our project plan, do a bunch of stuff that we did previously in 2022 to meet all the Eagle criterias. So I have submitted to you an approval to redo our project plan, provide all the data and statistics, everything needed for the Eagle application. And the, I was looking for recommendation to be approved for Wade Trim, any amount of $20,000, which includes multiple working tasks throughout the proposed amended project plan. Will probably be coming back to this board in the spring for possibly a public hearing and a, an approval for the revised project plan, which will be under the Eagle standards. And so it's, it's very positive for us in regards to if it is funded, the, the bond rate is very favorable at the state level. So we were hoping it'd be a very favorable rate where we can in turn hopefully, you know, get approval roughly in the summer, late summer, early fall, and then we do the project in '25, '26.
Questions from the board? Hearing no questions, what's the pleasure of the board?
To the chair.
Trustee Taylor.
I move that we approve the proposal for Eagle Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Project Contract to Wade Trim Associates, Inc., for the total sum of $20,000.
Support.
Supported by Trustee Kennedy. So the motion is to amend the proposed Eagle kind. So the motion is to amend the proposed Eagle Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Project Contract to Waitrim Associates for a total sum of twenty-thousand dollars. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you all.
Any other director's?
Thank you.
Announcements from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Chris Christie.
Michigan's presidential primary is February twenty-seventh, and this will be the first election that Redford voters will be able to vote early. Uh, and our early voting, uh, will be February seventeenth through the twenty-fifth, eight-thirty AM to four-thirty PM, right here in, uh, Redford Town Hall Boardroom. Also, I would like to, uh, congratulate, uh, Santa, all his elves, and Supervisor McCray for putting on the, the best old-fashioned Christmas ever.
Other announcements from the board? Okay, I have a few, a few. Uh, first of all, I just want to say if you're looking for a career here in the township, go to the township website for a job, but we're looking for police officers, police dispatch, firefighters, entry-level and lateral, police cadet, um, community improvement administrator in our community development department, school crossing guard and, and DAR bus driver, full, full and part-time. Uh, other than that, it's, I do want to remind everybody that even though we're not out there selling newspapers right now for the Goodfellows, we have a box here at Town Hall that needs some, uh, gifts put in there, and you can put that here at Town Hall the rest of this weekend and, and next week, uh, and I encourage everybody to fill the boxes. This is your opportunity. If you haven't done it yet, it's not too late, so please give to the Goodfellows to make sure every child in Redford has a Christmas. Uh, the, uh, I also want to say that the old-fashioned holiday, you know, I, I thank you for, for Christie, I mean, I, I helped Santa get off the, off the, the fire truck and got him in and welcomed to Redford Township, but, but the, the true accolades go to the, the, all the people that helped, went to put this on the festival committee and people that weren't on the festival committee department has. I mean, uh, this is a group project and when we have these kind of, uh, things that are going on, everybody, it's all hands on deck and they, they all help to make, make these things hap, these things happen. It was a great turnout, um, and we had great weather, one too cold, one too hot, and everybody seemed to have a good time, so thank you to everybody involved for putting this on. I truly thanks are, are in order. Uh, and lastly, I just want to say, uh, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, and any other holiday you celebrate this time of year, enjoy your family and your friends, uh, keep them close, and we will see you next year at our next board meeting. Thank you. Any other questions from the board? This meeting is adjourned.